The April eighteenth work session, four thirties a time. If I can call this meeting order and get approval of the agenda.
So moved chairman.
Second.
Second, in my favor. I was happy. All right, we got our bulk water sales agreement, work session between the county and the city. And Mr. Rissner, you prepared to start it off? We need to.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, you know, I thought this would be a good opportunity for this board to kind of talk through, you know, your ideas about doing a bulk water purchase agreement. Brandon and Tim and I have had a good bit of discussion about this, about what volumes that we're comfortable with, and we've looked at historic volumes and that type of thing. I'll say there's a lot of different ways to do this, and so what I've kind of laid out here, planned the layout for you, is just one of them. So there are tons of other ways that this could be done if the board's so inclined. What you have here, just kind of as a conversation starter, I guess, is you can do this with a base charge and then usage based on tiers. And so we've talked with our rate consultant, that's something that he has seen in other places, and so that's kind of what's employed here. You know, this one contemplates a base charge of 27,500 a month, and that includes up to six and a half million gallons. That amount would be paid whether the water is used or not. So that's the whole take-or-pay concept. The effective rate on that six and a half million will be 423,000. And so just for comparison, the new amount that we have in place now is 444,000. So that's, at that minimum, there's a 21 cent per thousand savings. The usage charge is broken out into four tiers, and it's decreasing as the usage goes up. And so at the, at that minimum, it would be the 423,000. At their average usage, the effective rate would be 407,000, and then the maximum usage, which is 12,500,000 a month, the effective rate would be 386. So the savings increase in terms of the rate as usage goes up. Financial implications for both, if you went with this scenario, 330,000 in guaranteed revenue for the county. So what I talk about here is pre-increase and post-increase, and that's talking about the rate increase that went into effect recently. So we would have an increase of 32,000 over the pre-increase revenue amount, a decrease of 38,000 over the post-increase revenue amount. So basically, the, again, this is looking at average water uses over the course of a year. The city's bill stands to go up by roughly 70,000. So this is getting close to splitting the difference between the two there. The city of Gray would get between six and a half and 12 and a half million gallons of water, and then they're, they would see an increase of 32,000 over the pre-increase level, and they would save 38,000 over what's projected right now at the, at the 444,000. Just a few things for the board to kind of think through related to all this is, you know, how long of an agreement do you want to put in place? I believe the rate consultant said that he had typically said between five and 10 years. How do you handle rate increases? Do you want to cap it at a certain percentage per year? Or do they get the same increase as retail customers, or no increase for the duration of the agreement? Just got to figure out how the board wants to handle that. And then what do we do over the 12.5 million gallons? Is there a penalty rate that goes into effect then? Or do we stop sales completely at 12 and a half million? I think, you know, one of our interests in all this is just ensuring that we have adequate supply and that we don't put too much of a strain on the system. So behind that front page there, you've got three, three sheets. One of them is at the minimum usage, and then one average and one maximum. And so it kind of shows you how that effective rate goes down as usage goes up. So I'll stop talking at this point and answer any questions y'all might have, or just be interested to get everyone's thoughts on that type of arrangement.
So Jason, you said that this is average usage. How long have we looked back? Is this a five-year average, three-year average, 10-year? I mean, what do you know?
I think the, the average we used here was looking back a year.
Okay. And when we say the minimum usage, that means at no time did they use less than that per month?
There were, so looking back, I think maybe 5.9 million was the, the minimum. Five point, what'd you say? 5.3.
And what's the maximum?
Uh, 11.2. This is 20.
Okay.
So.
5.3.
While Sam's doing that math, Macon Water Authority, how do they give us rate increases?
It's. Ours is based on the consumer rate here, and when consumers are given an increase, we're given an increase.
Have we ever tried to negotiate anything different?
Not during my time here.
And Sam is smiling because he knows that doesn't mean we get to negotiate, right?
Well, I can tell you this, the school district's the second largest customer they have.
Mm-hmm.
We pay as much as the, as the last largest customer.
Yep.
Yeah, you don't, you don't get a, yeah.
And the reason why.
Which would be us, correct?
For, no, no, we know we're close.
Well, we had bought them from them seven years, right?
Probably over five. We might have bought some right when I first started, which was a little over six years ago.
Been a while.
Yeah, yeah.
Been a while.
Probably five and a half years anyway.
Yeah, so they've got agreements with other counties besides us, and they have industrial parks, they have several industrial parks, they have big, big water users.
Right. Well, my point was that we pay the consumer rate even as a county government, so it's kind of standard that.
Well, we pay a negotiated rate based on, it's not the same as a residential consumer, but yes, a consumer rate, and when their rates go up, all three tiers that they have. So the way I understand, they've got a residential, a commercial, and then a, I would say governmental rate. So anything over a certain threshold is that rate.
Right. And the reason why I bring that up is just for the obvious, for consistency, and to make sure that we don't do something that's non-conforming, if that makes sense. But also that we protect the interest of the water department. I mean, at the end of the day, we can't sell water cheaper than we produce it, and we also have to be consistent with how we charge it.
For the negotiated rate, and I'm just curious, did we come up with these numbers, or did, was there the rate consultant?
On the, on the usage numbers?
Mm-hmm.
I think he provided us some numbers that were close to those. I may, I may have played around with those some.
Gotcha. Okay. Just want to make sure.
His may have started at 3.7 and been 10 cents lower for each, each tier.
Just curious, what's Macon Water Authority charging?
380 something, 3. I want to say it's in the 380s.
Okay.
And our current consumer rate is?
387.
387.
We're paying the residential rate, so it should be around 38, 387, 387.
And what's our current residential rate here?
444.
And we have to remember, now, we have to get a little bit of history here. You have to remember that we took almost 4,000 acres off of Digest. So it's not a, it's not a, we didn't get a good rate just for the, being good friends.
Yeah, it's a lot of tax dollars we're not collecting.
4,000 acre, or 3,600 acres?
Let's just call that what it is. Jones kind of got bamboozled hoodwinked and ran amok.
Well, I mean.
And you buy water, I mean, like.
Yeah, you, you roll that into a consistent guaranteed water source, you know, and it all came about after the, after the flood. I mean, when they didn't have water in, in Bibb County.
Yeah. We should have got free water for life, but, you know, I wouldn't hear at that time. So the reason why I ask that is just being consistent. I don't feel like we should overcharge one of our greatest partners in the process. We do know we have to make a certain amount of money. We do know we have to guarantee them a certain amount of water, and we do know we want to make sure that we understand what our allocation is, so we're prepared to produce that amount of water, right? And I'm going to ask a silly question. Have y'all talked, have you talked to anybody from Gray? Oh, okay. Is this an open discussion, or we're just talking to ourselves?
Open discussion, I'd say.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Still not used to talking to the customer, at the customer, while the customer is present.
Come on, make yourself a home.
Yeah.
I'd say drag a chair up closer.
Yeah.
Drag a chair up.
Have a seat, we got room.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I know one thing we got, and it's been talked about several times as far as working together on it. Mayor Pro team, you and I talked about keeping the tanks full, because there's times that our system gets stretched to the, you know, like, it stays stretched to the limit, but there's times that having the tanks in Gray full will sure take a burden off us, particularly in the summertime and whatnot, to help us, you know, keep from peaking out at 24/7.
Right. Did you change from the course time to, or this afternoon? So I'm so used to y'all's meetings starting at like 6 o'clock. Yeah, really, I'm just here if y'all have any questions about our system or how our system operates. So I think that's been one of our big questions, is A, can the county provide us the water at night? Is that a better time? It sounds like B, do we have to store additional water in the tanks and in our storage units? And some of the water that we generate can be recycled on off hours?
It's been tried before, the way our wells are, we're in the old, they don't know. A few years back, I did have the valve at the Jones County Gray connection actuated to where it would, it's not just somebody manually going to open a valve, take or blow it or close it, get it cut on at probably 68 PSI, the valve would shut off at probably 72 PSI. We probably stay at 75, 80 percent capacity. Forward, I still.
I think that's a question for engineers, can we supply it? So I know, we don't have a peak time or off-peak time for delivering water, so I don't think there's any, I don't think it plays into the rate part of it, but it is the supply and demand part of, you know, which we look for steady water flow, but also steady revenue so that we can plan our 10, 15, 20-year projections on, on projects to maintain our systems and upgrade systems and stuff like that. So we're looking at our consistent revenue side. So I think it's an engineer question on can we provide more water? I do think, but based on this, we're looking at what were the preferred outcomes for, for both sides, and that for us, it was having the benefits from the long-range planning's part of it, and also for them, it's the ability to reduce some of the impact of a, of an increase based on quantity of water they need. So if they grow, they're not growing, and it costing more to, to get more. It's actually costing less to get more. So I think bulk rate is, is a, is a, I don't say a good deal, but it's better for them as a bulk rate if there's any growing or if there's any increase in usage, based on the amount. That's why I was asking, is it, are we looking back at a five-year? Because I, I think if we look back, well, I think the last couple of years is probably a good indicator, because before that, I mean, I think they'll agree that the city has grown more in the last year than I've seen it grow in the last 10 years, with new restaurants opening up and new businesses opening up. I think downtown is thriving, and that's a good thing, because, you know, rising waters float off ships, but it's a, it's a good, it's a good thing to see that. I think this probably benefits that situation better than if they were the same level of water and didn't have an outlook that there was going to increase in water or anything. I think bulk rates lend to that, but it also gives us the benefit of having the steady projections going forward so that we don't have a good year and a bad year, and we're basing our projections on a good year.
I think the city as a customer, is a consistent customer, and again, at this point, we have a good rate, it slows down our interest in seeking water. I know it's limited within the city, but you never know. I mean, I'm until, you always find things that we don't expect. It's, it's, things advance, this technology advances, and it allows us to stay as a customer to y'all in a kind of symbiotic relationship between the city and the county for that consistency for y'all. Kind of like when you pick the gas, we pick the flat rate forever, because the gas company knows instead of higher or lower throughout the year, it's consistent for both sides. It gives us that, like you said, long-term outlook and race thing concerns on both sides.
You can't be using big words like that. It's all symbiotic. I might have to look that up, so.
And day long, of course, you know, it's a little bit different with us being here inside Jones County, part of Jones County, that we look at coming from outside the county and other counties connection. Like Sam said, benefit of the city improving and growing benefits everybody. I don't know if y'all saw, but we just had a big festival this last weekend, had what over a thousand people, I think they said, come out for the festival and stuff like that, to bring people out to live in the county and support everybody.
So Tim and Brandon, I think the question is, are we able to provide capacity for them to keep a fuller tank, I guess is the best way to, to put it?
Yes, but not much. More, while we need previous.
Yeah, which is why we've had a two-hour conversation before y'all got here on, how do we get to the next level of water supply?
Yeah, well, y'all kind of are total, like, Brandon said, you know, it's, it's a 100-degree day, mid-August, and they have a main break, or we have a main break, we're getting the bind pretty fast, both systems.
Or like the crazy event, that Christmas was, with everything freezing.
Whether to leave them dripping or not leave them dripping, let them bust. So, and, and I'm going to go back, as I said earlier, no such thing as dumb questions, so I'm going to test that theory now. So if we maintain a tank at 90 percent, and then it comes a hot, hot July day, and everybody's using water, do we look at not trying to drain down our reserves a little bit, down to 40 percent, and then we get some rainy, a rainy week, and we can fill back up? Or is it, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't, I don't think we want to have it at 30 percent, and then we have a real dry month, and we're struggling with everybody using water, watering their lawns, and we're struggling to pull water out to fill up a tank, and we have to get to the point where we have to make some decisions, you know? Vow that down a little bit so you don't fill up at the same rate, or, you know, we have customers that are, I mean, not low, but water pressure, but the worst-case scenario.
From the EPD standpoint, we're required to be a peak hour demand. All right, that's typically three times your average state demand. For us, that's probably somewhere around 2,650, 2,700 gallons, and then almost 1,000 gallons a day. You can't beat that peak hour demand. So Shan and Brandon, I think, work well together, plus better than what we have seen in the past. They talk with each other. There are times we shut valves, close valves, slow the flow, sometimes we have to come home. But all at the end of the day, we still got to have time to fill up. Several years ago, a board voted for a 2B gallon tank on 49. If we didn't have it, we probably would have run out of 67 tons, because our capacity is limited from what we can generate. I would regenerate probably 18, 19 gallons a minute, which is what, what we'd need. Fortunately, we had, had the valve, worked from Macon Water Authority, but I think it was the summer of 16, we ended up cutting the system to half, and from State Coast to Upper River Road, near core, we had to Macon Water Authority for about six, eight weeks. We just couldn't produce it, couldn't fill up, couldn't do anything.
Do we see that a bulk rate agreement potential have effect on how we work? I mean, I think that's based off weather and production, right? I mean, it's not going to change y'all having to get together and work the valves back and forth based on what we can produce. Doesn't matter if they're willing to buy 10 gallons or 10 million gallons, that still has to happen the same way. I just, I just want to be, for me to be clear on that, that bulk rate doesn't mean, you know, we can provide more than we can provide.
I think 12.9 is probably a maximum. That's if we're below 4,000 gallons a day, 4,500.
And they've, they've never, you've never used that much, 12.9? What'd you say, 11, 11.2 was the maximum?
11.2 from last year was the most, kind of like.
I haven't seen months, just in being around as many years, we may reach 12 million gallons, but normally if such a life that happens, it's a main break, it's, it's one of our wells being out of service or something like that.
And it's 100 degrees with three months of no rain?
Right. But that's in line, because normally we'll, we'll stay in between the six and 12 million gallon range, depending on weather time of year, you know, of course, midsummer, if our main will probably reach 800 gallon.
Because was it 2017 or 2018? 2017, I think, is when we had the real bad drought, like broke records for drought and stuff. And if we didn't, if we didn't pull water from the Macon Water Authority for our system, that means we didn't slack them any. They were able to use as much as they needed, and we were able to supply as much as we needed, I would think.
Well, we, a lot of times, we'll, we'll pull the 2B gallon tank on 49 gallons, 70, 80 feet, 90 feet. I've seen it run a month, six weeks at a time, and not go over 40 feet, and everything's running. So we try to make sure they have what they need, because they got to take care of their nursing homes, they got dialysis, those kind of things, and you just can't get along. Honestly, a bulk agreement is agreement between y'all and the city, it isn't going to affect any of the operations at all.
And I think for our, for our city friends and partners, I, we talked about this, this conversation we had before about sometimes we bragged that we didn't, we hadn't had to raise rates, or we hadn't raised rates in five, six, seven years. Well, that sounds great until you have to raise them, and then you have to raise them based on our rate analysis that says you should be at this level and you're at this level, and all of a sudden, you, you could have raised them 2 percent every two years, and then all of a sudden, you get eight years down the road, and you got to raise them 5 or 6 percent. It, it feels worse than, because, yeah, people, I don't say people have that, we have short memories that it's been six years since we raised rates, when in reality, if we'd have raised them a little bit at the time, it wouldn't have been as big of an impact that one hit. Some could argue that 2 percent, four years ago, you were paying that 2 percent extra for the last four years, but it's still, it's still a tough pill to swallow at one time, but we didn't, we definitely didn't single anybody out. Everybody got, everybody got a rate increase, me included.
Is it out of line to ask the two of y'all what y'all think would be the better solution, or you'd rather not?
Take, take what?
On, on how we've got this tier, be the best.
We all first, we all first sat down and came up with this, so I'm, I'm just, that's what you're asking.
So, so chairman, I think it's one tier based on amount of usage, so, right, Jason? Minimum use, average use, and maximum use?
The, the tiers pick up above the 6.5 million gallons.
Okay. And I know we had conversations about, you know, what, what do we think was the fairest thing, because we know we benefit from having the, the secure sale of, and future projections and all that. We understand that we benefit from that. So what was fair, that the city could benefit from bulk rates if we could benefit from? And I, I think they've done a good job in, in splitting the difference. I mean, I don't know.
And I, I didn't ask the question right, so I bear with me. Sometimes my, my mouth outruns my brain, so it happens the type of time to bear with you. But we've got a five-year versus 10. We've got everything, several things to talk about. Mr. Martin, senior.
Again, like I started, I alluded to in the beginning, obviously, important partner. I want to make sure that this makes sense for us and makes sense for them. Guarantee the water that they need and secure the rate that's comfortable while sustaining what the water department needs. Obviously, you know, the term is negotiable. Obviously, 10 years is probably ideal for us. 50 years is, it's something that I think, we, we've even signed those sort of arrangements with, with Macon Water Authority. I don't know that I would want to obligate them or us to that number of years, unless it was tied to, just talking with, with Chris, CPI or, or, and I'm going to, I'm going to use the concept of a flex rate, like if we have to depend on Macon Water Authority, then I'd like that factored in, right? So if we had to buy water bulk rate from Macon, and it costs us more to produce, then there's just an adder for that difference, if that makes sense?
Absolutely.
And that would be the one clause that I would see, because I don't know, you know? I've seen some stuff that has made me go, whoo, oh, my God. But I want to be prepared, and the last thing I want is the city to have any sort of challenge because we can't manage it, or something fails in the system, but we know we have a switch to flip, but when we switch it, I want to make sure that nobody goes into shock over that, right? So I'm, this is super easy for me, I'm, I'm real negotiable. This is service delivery, my, my strategy is different, but I wasn't present, and y'all already did that, so.
Yeah. I, I agree, I'm not tied to, I, I would probably say 10 years, just so we don't have to do it every five years, but if, if, I don't think on our side, there's any reason why it couldn't be five, or 10, or 20, but just because I, you know, we vote to change it, we could vote, you know, to change it again if the need came up on our side or their side. They could come up and say, this is not working, or whatever. I would say we've, we've talked about being fair and splitting the difference, because they are the biggest partner we have, not only just in water, but in government in general, and so doing the fairest thing. So I would say, you know, for rate increases, obviously, I don't think we can just say there'll be no rate increases. I think it says whatever we incur, whatever that percentage that we incur, we have to pass it on. So if we are 2 percent below residential rates, and we go up a percent, then we go up a percent, but we're still at 2 percent below residential rate. So whatever we are now, and we have to raise rates, then whatever that raise is based on our percentage to the city, our partnership there is still the same. They don't adversely affect them any more than it does residential or anything like that. Because, you know, when we have to raise them, it's based on what it takes for us to provide that service.
Mr. Martin, I like the idea, so, you know, we do have to flip that valve at Macon Water Authority. At least we, you know, we're, we're covered on that. We've been very fortunate not to have to hit that valve.
Amen.
But, uh, it, it gets pretty costly when we do have to fit that valve and get it to where it needs to be.
Bone, you got any?
As long, I mean, when you said we did, was that Gray sitting down with y'all, the three of y'all sat down? Or just?
No, we just, maybe it turned.
And we're saying an agreement, not a contract, correct?
Yeah, you'd probably do a governmental agreement between the, the city and the county. And Commissioner Martin mentioned fifty years. You can go after fifty years on one of those. Not saying you want to do that, but.
I think ten years is a good round number.
Right.
This gives them economy of scale, the more you use, the less pay, you know, per gallon.
Obviously, it's our work session, so whatever we decide to do, we'll, we'll set a formal proposal to the city, so that they, they can go.
Right, they can have their, a work session and, and discuss it too. Because they, I mean, they may come back and go, you know what? This is, bulk rate's what we're looking for too, and we would, we would prefer fifty years. Or, no, we're, we're hesitant on it, let's just go five years, you know?
Right, exactly.
And I, I think if we're saying we're not really married to the lo, the, the definite longevity of the, of the agreement, then I, I think that, uh, you know, give them an opportunity to talk about it. Because they may have things on their side that we don't know about, or they may come back and say, what about this, or what about that? But I think that the questions that Jason had for us was, you know, is the, the duration of the agreements negotiable, the rate increases? Keep it at the same, as fair as it is now? Because I think, um, the, the last two, same as retail, or no increase for the duration, is like wide open on either end. I mean, one's, you know, it's, it's both spectrums. You know, the other one was, they're over the twelve and a half million gallons. Do we have to have anything at, at twelve and a half million? Is it, you know?
The way we came up with that number is just, uh, the three of us talking about what, what we felt like our system could handle.
Handle, mhm.
But as we grow and expand our water system, twelve and a half, and they get, if they got an industrial customer, a large commercial, that may use a lot of water, we don't want to penalize the city for usage.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to.
Yeah, and I, I don't like that word either.
No.
But I do want to leave it open where, you know, kind of like with our development authority, if, if there's a prospect that's coming, right? Let's have a conversation about how we get there. And that may be a mutual agreement where, hey, you know what? We may need to identify another water source, and we may need some partnering on that. And if the sweat equity is, you know, you're pitching in on this, um, on the, on the wells and on, on the plant, then there's some savings. And then there's some acceleration to getting that water to that client. Because if someone showed up today and said, we need a million gallons of water a day, what's our answer?
Yeah.
Not gonna be able to do it.
Yeah, great. I don't, I don't think we make holistic changes based on norms, you know? Let's, let's make those contingencies based on outliers. So, if they're, if they're going over twelve and a half million once every six months, or every year, it's not a big deal. If they're going, if they know that they're having a customer coming in, that's all of a sudden gonna take them to fourteen-five every month, then, you know, maybe we need something that says, hey, if we, if we're consistently gonna be over twelve and a half, maybe we need to talk.
Mhm.
Or, or leave language in there that says, above that, we need a negotiation, or we need to come back to the table.
Right, right.
Because, A, if they come in with a fourteen, a, a customer that gets fourteen and a half million gallons, we're all happy. So, uh, you know?
Chairman, we got the Mayor Pro team, his hand, uh.
I certainly think it's the exception, not the rule, you know, as well, that, that I don't think that turning it off at that point's a good thing, you know, clearly, but I think that everyone will be open to, to some discussion on what meets will be done. It doesn't put you all in a bad spot, just because you gave us extra, extra water, whether it be to get to turn off making water or, or, you know, that. What I, I'd love to see is maybe y'all can come up with a boundary that's comfortable for y'all. Like you said, between, you know, whether it be five or ten years, is, you know, inconsequential, whether it's five or ten, that I could return to city council, present that, and, uh, move toward that agreement within an acceptable range for y'all, when you're ready to do that. I don't know if that's fair at this moment, obviously, but.
Ten.
I like that.
Well, I heard three tens here.
Absolutely, we'll have ten.
But I'm just saying, something where we can turn around and present that, and get that going as soon as possible, uh, the only thing, like I said, I hate to see something where we, we say something like stop sales at twelve and a half, and maybe some kind of notice, maybe something that addresses any burden that places in the county, to make sure you're covered.
Yeah, we weren't saying stop water sales at twelve and a half, what do you mean, stop?
That would never happen.
Stop, the, stop the, the.
That's what this paper says.
Stop the benefit from increasing.
It, it said or, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so no, it, in my ideas, that's when you hit, if we had to, you'd hit Macon, right? You turn the valve on. And it's just, whatever that rate is over there, you'd experience that, because it could be.
Where we take on that same burden of what's paying for it, whatever that be?
That would make sense.
I think, um, John said it right. The water sale doesn't stop there, the economy of scale stops there.
Absolutely.
At twelve and a half, so, yeah, because.
Yeah, because you'll be losing money quickly.
I can see now, if we use more than twelve and a half million, everybody's faucet quits working.
Call Brandon. Jason wrote it.
So, do y'all have enough to take back to your, your board?
I believe so.
Or council? Well, we're going to have to make a vote on it, and then set a, a formal proposal for them to have.
Yeah, I just know if they had any thing that they thought would be more coming from, that need from us to, to take to them, I think. The three questions are, we had answered.
Future agenda, that'd be my train.
We need to put that on a future agenda. Do you have it on the next one?
I think it's on this agenda.
No, we didn't have it on this one.
Okay, well, this will be, uh.
It's the first one in the month.
Can, can. Put it on the next meeting's agenda.
Or do we want to wait on our response?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and, and that's, I think, an opportunity to just have some open dialogue, right?
Okay, that's fine. However you want to do it.
Yeah, let's talk.
You got enough information to share with your, your council?
Yes, I believe so. Were you wanting to try and set up a, a joint meeting, or just a?
Whatever y'all like, we, we accommodate.
Jason's buying lunch.
Y'all bring the pizza.
I think if their, if their council wants to have a work session amongst themselves first to discuss, and then, or if they're open to joint meeting, I think we could accommodate.
Just do it.
I like that. I appreciate, let me just say, on behalf of the city, like I said, for anyone who didn't hear, I apologize. I, I got the date mixed up, but I was glad to be here, Cheyenne, to be here. And, uh, I have to let them know that this kind of was in the works and coming. And, uh, I appreciate y'all taking the time to consider, putting the effort into this. I think it's a good move moving forward, both the city and the county. And, uh, I will make sure we get this related, and set up something where we can all get together and hopefully, hopefully work something out.
Awesome.
Great.
That's good.
And, and if you haven't heard, um, when you see development authority meetings, please come. You're cordially invited. Um, it's a great opportunity for cities, counties, and all the other parties to, to be aware of that information that happens, um, and then how we all play a, a role in that. And if you haven't been formally invited, you're formally invited. Please come, appreciate it.
Thank you. If it, if it's the will of the board, we'll continue on the work session. We got some special guests back here that, uh. I'm sorry? Okay, uh, go ahead, then we'll start it properly.
Motion to adjourn, Chairman.
Second. All right, Ray. Keep it straight.